We'd like to welcome everybody to the December 7th City Council Meeting for the City of Gainesville. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Reverend Frank Medina will give our invocation.
Father God, we praise you in this day. We give you thanks, give you all the honor and all the glory for your mercy and for your goodness. In this night, Father, we thank you for everyone that is able to be in this place tonight. We thank you for the leadership of our community, and we ask you in this moment, Lord, to bless our community. And we ask you, Father, to give wisdom, give knowledge, and give understanding, Lord, to each leader, Lord, to make this place, Gainesville, a better place for the present and for the future. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray and we give you thanks. Amen.
Reverend Frank, if you'll stay there just a minute. Tell us a little bit about your ministry, and I want to give you a little gift from the city.
Appreciate it. Pastor Ephraim Medina, known as Pastor Frank, and our congregation is Restoration Community Church. We are located at 942 Myrtle Street, Gainesville, that's in the city. And what we are doing that is, I believe, impacting and helping the community is that we are teaching ESL classes, English as a Second Language. We are also teaching Spanish as a Second Language. Buenas noches, ¿cómo están?
Muy bien.
And hopefully, pretty soon, we'll be teaching French, we just need a teacher.
Manoche.
But we're also teaching the basic of mechanics, how to change brakes, how to change oil, and different things within the facility of the church is a blessing. And we are also doing pretty much a diversity of different things, like basic of españoles, carpintería, carpentry, and different things that are just to empower the community. We are also helping people that are having problem translating or filing applications, and helping them also with issues, parents, issues with the kids in their school through some of the members that work with the school department. So we are trying to be good citizens in every word of the word.
Thank you so much for being with us. Those are great services that you're providing, and we appreciate you being with us. Let me just give you this as a token.
Appreciate it.
Merci, monsieur.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a special announcement. We're very excited to announce a new city website. It'll still be Gainesville.org. And Kattil, if you want to stand up and tell us a little bit about this website.
I don't even think words can convey how excited I am to be here tonight and to finally release the new city website. The last time we released a new website was the year 2000. So this project is certainly long overdue. I am most excited that we've been able to work with such a wonderful company, a local company, Full Media, and I would like to ask Chris Nordholtz, who has been my main contact there and is the CEO of the company, to come forward. And he also will introduce some of the others from Full Media that, you know, you kind of become like a little family because you talk every day and you're together for so long. I think the great thing about Full Media is that they live in Gainesville, their families are here in Gainesville, they grew up in Gainesville. So they have the same vested interest in making this a great website that we do here at the city, so we're very excited to work with them. I would also like to ask anyone who's in the audience who helped me on the website, if they would please stand up. This project was, now out of all the people that are here, I know someone helped me with the website. Okay, they're too shy, they don't want to stand up. But this project was a little bit different than websites I've done in the past, and that is, we brought in at least one person, sometimes two, from every single city department to work on their specific page, so that we knew we were giving the community the information that they needed. And who better to give that to them than the person that's in that department and takes those phone calls every day? So I have worked with approximately 15 city employees on this from the very beginning. They've done a great job, and this is, really has been, just a citywide effort, so I appreciate everything they've done. The only direction that I gave Chris and Ryan and the other guys at Full Media was that I like the city's logo colors, blue and green, and make Gainesville look great. That was about it. And they took that and they ran with it. Chris will talk to you more about the design of it, and Ryan is the designer who is helping us over there with the lights. And it just, it just really snowballed, and I think it became a website that we couldn't even envision in the beginning what we wanted, but certainly it is everything that we wanted, and I think a website that can compete with the best government websites out there. So we're very excited. So without further ado, I would like to invite the mayor to come forward, and we are going to have an electronic ribbon cutting. So the mayor will come forward, and in just a moment, if you'll look at the ribbon that we have, the big ribbon on the screen, we are going to have her just push a few buttons, and you know, by the magic of technology, we're going to cut this ribbon.
I love it.
Ryan is going, yeah, Ryan's going to turn the lights down a little bit, and so, Mayor, we'll let you go ahead and go forward now with the ribbon, and showing now, of course, the new city website, almost.
All right.
And one more, and we will officially release the city's new website. Okay.
Magic.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And now I, because I'm not the technology person, I also want to say that this is very fitting that we would do this during the holiday season. It was kind of like, here's our wish list for Santa, and he gave us everything we wanted. And there wasn't anything, if I called up Chris, or Anthony, or Ryan, and said, you know, HR wants to do something special with jobs, what can we do? And they said, we'll work it out. And they worked it out every single time. There's still some more things, you know, you keep thinking of all the stuff you want, and we kept thinking of more stuff. We had to just finally stop at a certain point, but we're very happy with where we stopped. But I'll let Chris come up here now and kind of tell you what you're going to see on the new website and what the new website can do for our citizens.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Kattil. One thing I do want to point out is we haven't been working on this project for 10 years. That was, but we're excited to be where we are today and are really appreciative of the opportunity to work on this project with you. I would like to take a quick moment to introduce two people from our team that are here. Davis White is our president.
Go ahead.
And Davis is here with us. And as Kattil mentioned before, Ryan Brackett was the lead designer on this project. And so creatively, everything you see within the site, Ryan really drove the ship on the creative piece. A couple of things that I wanted to point out that were really important to us, we really felt like we had three main goals with this site. Number one, we wanted it to be visually compelling. Certainly, we wanted to present the city in a great light visually speaking. Number two, we wanted it to be very functional for a user, for a citizen, or somebody else that might have interest in touching base with the city online. And so just thinking about how information is organized, how people might interact with the city through the website was something that we took into great consideration. And then number three, and one thing I really want to stress as we look at some of the site here tonight, is the content management system that this site is built upon basically gives the city and your staff control over probably 98% of the content, photos, videos. And so people on your staff who may not have a lot of technical skills can keep the site updated without having to call us every time they want to make a change. And so that was very important. We're going to walk through several slides here tonight, and I will point out that what we're looking at are screenshots. We're not looking at the live site. We just wanted to focus on a couple of things tonight, and then I want to encourage everybody when you can at your desk to go back and click through the site and see all the different types of functionality we have here. What we're looking at now is the homepage of the site. You'll see across the top, we've got our main navigation, some subnavigation at the very top. As you move down, you see we've got 10 images currently loaded there, where you see Historic Green Street, but we could just as easily have five or 50 images. And again, your staff will have the ability to add and edit everything that you're seeing here and promote different messages. Along the right side, you see Chattahoochee Golf Course, Inc., Green Street Tour. Again, complete control over that and what you want to highlight in that area. And then as we continue to move down, you'll see city news, events, meetings, some links that we felt were very important on the live site. As you continue to scroll down, you'll see below this area, we've got some calls to action for TV-18 and some different areas throughout the site that we wanted to drive people toward. And so that's the main homepage, Ryan. If you could go to the next page. You'll see here, this looks similar, but where we've gone now is the page for the visitor section, really highlighting tourism and things like that. And you'll notice that the layout is very similar to the homepage. And again, the city staff has the ability to designate a certain layout for individual pages, and what this basically allows us to do is have basically a website for the visitors' area within the main city site. And again, they have complete control over the images that'll rotate through there, those calls to action, daily deals, and CW-150, the text as you keep scrolling down, the calls to action on the right there with the daily deals and hot tickets. Again, every department and even people within individual departments, subdepartments, has the ability to go in and make their page or their section within the site what they need it to be for their particular audience. As we continue to go to the next slide there, Ryan. This is another internal page, Downtown Gainesville. You'll see that this is a different format. Again, a non-technical person can go in and say, I need to create a page for this particular area within city government, and I want to use this format. They have control over all that text. One thing I want to point out at the top there, you see that little "Did You Know?" section. Every page has the ability to add that, and we felt like that was just an interesting way to teach people more about the city, maybe show some interesting upcoming events, whatever it might be. This particular one says "Did You Know?", and a lot of the pages do use that as kind of a "Did You Know?", but that could just as easily be different verbiage. If we go to the next page there, Ryan. Here's a calendar. If you notice, if you look toward the top there, Calendar Type, All Events. This particular calendar that we're looking at is a citywide calendar, but if you hit that dropdown, there's also a calendar for Park and Rec, for the Georgia Mountain Center, and so you can create multiple calendars, and a site visitor can filter that information however they find most interesting. There's also the ability to register for events, and again, very easy to create new events. It syncs with Google Maps. If you put a location for the event, somebody can very easily download a map, just a lot of functionality there. We go to the next page. Here is the page for TV-18, and again, complete control over all the text, the navigation on the left, those calls to action that you see there. But if you continue to look down, you see featured videos. Every time you add a new video, they can go in there and just easily upload that. All the city council meetings can be viewed online going forward. And then below this, we can't see that, let's stop right there, and we can't see it, but below that, we actually have an archive. And so we can pass videos, we can go in and categorize those. They might be tourism videos, or they might be park and rec videos, or whatever they might be. What we're looking at here is a close-up of the featured video, and then again, you can click it and watch it right there, or you can click and watch a larger version, screen-wide version. So we continue to go to the next slide. Contact us. Obviously, we wanted the site to be very interactive and engage people, and so there are a lot of areas throughout the site for citizens to come and submit information, fill out surveys, and it's easier for a site visitor, but it's also easy, hopefully, for city staff because now they're not having to take faxes of PDFs that have been filled out by hand, all that's done electronically. We go to the next slide. I Want To was part of the top navigation you see there, and again, we can have as many links as we want to here, but we felt like that was an area, a lot of times people come to the site and they just want to do something, pay their water bill, pay a citation, a court fine, whatever it might be. And so these links can either go to other areas within this site, or they can link out to other websites. And so again, just trying to make it very intuitive for a site visitor to find what they're looking for. And we'll go to the next slide. The Park and Rec page, again, you'll notice is using the similar layout to the tourism page and the homepage. And again, complete control over those images at the top, the Get Out, Get Active, Looking for the Perfect Holiday Gift, those calls to action, all the calls to action down the right side, Find a Park, Rent a Facility. Again, the Park and Rec staff has complete control over what they want this page to be and can easily change it if they want to highlight different things at different times of the year. That's very easy to do. And then we'll go to the next one. Within the Park and Rec page, online registration, as I mentioned before, the calendar feature has the ability to register for events, which would be great for parents with young kids that want to sign up for Little League and things like that. And we'll go to the next slide. Here's just a close-up of that call to action there on the left, and what we wanted to point out here was how easy it is to upload files. And so here's the activity guide. It can be uploaded to the website, and then a site visitor can just come and download a digital copy, and you could do that with anything, PDFs, any sort of document you might want to make available on the website. We've got one or two more. This particular community survey is within the Police Department section of the site, and again, just an opportunity, hopefully, for citizens to interact with the Police Department easily, and instead of having to get those faxed PDFs, the Police Department, we still have the PDF, so somebody could download those, as you see their related documents, but then we have an electronic version of the survey to make it very easy for people to fill out, and it submits that electronically. And then we're back to the homepage there, that original homepage design. So those are just a few things. Again, we're proud of this site. We feel like there's a lot of functionality. Hopefully, it's going to be easy for people to use and will be a good tool for the city going forward. So if anybody has any questions on anything, we'd love to answer questions.
It's very impressive and beautiful. We're just real excited about this. It's great.
I don't have questions, but I did spend an hour this afternoon going through it. It was fun. I loved the video tour. And that's what, I guess we don't have time to do all of that tonight, but that was really, really good. And then, of course, I enjoyed the 2010 Year in Review.
Thank you for watching.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, certainly, we want to thank once again Full Media for helping us. Also want to mention that Facebook is on the way. We are in the process right now of developing a social media strategy for the City of Gainesville, working on some personnel policies for all of that, too. And as soon as that is ready, we will venture out into that area. So looking forward to just continuing to make sure that everyone out there knows about the City of Gainesville.
Super. Chris, and Davis, and Ryan, we just appreciate so much. Sounds like you just did a wonderful job working together with the staff, and Kattil is just, she's so excited she can't stand it. But we all are, and it's just, it's going to be wonderful to have this website.
Yeah. You've got a lot to be proud of.
And it really is like three websites in one, if you will, because we have, you know, as we ventured into the world of tourism this year, we have a, or last year, we have a visitgainsvillega.com is a brand-new website for us that is basically contained inside this website, so is downtowngainsville.com. And then, of course, the Parks and Recreation website, it's a website in itself, too. So really, four websites in one, if you will.
Yeah. It is super. I really appreciate you.
Is there a way to identify a visitor to the site?
Well, certainly, if somebody filled, certainly, if somebody filled out a contact form, we can identify them by the information they give us. We have installed Google Analytics on the site, and so that gives you a lot of information on how people are coming to the site, how they're behaving once they get there, where they came from, did they do a Google search, did they link there from another website? And so there's a lot of data there. It's an imperfect science when it comes down to identifying a specific person. There are some ways that you can identify what IP block they came from and things like that, but if they don't volunteer the information by filling out a form, it is somewhat difficult to know specific people. But we can see volume of traffic, where they came from, navigation trends, things like that.
Any other questions?
Merci, monsieur.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Looks like it's user-friendly.
It does.
I was on it last night, so it was user-friendly.
It's really, really good.
I'll have to get friendly with it.
And next, we have three special recognitions that we're very excited about. The first one is for Cindy Reed. Cindy, if you'll come forward to the podium. This is the Barbara Mason Award for Keep Hall Beautiful. Cindy has won this award for the Executive Director of the Year, and she won it at the Keep Georgia Beautiful Awards Luncheon on Wednesday, November 10th. I just want to read what the award is, and Cindy, we're so proud of you, and we're so glad you could be with us tonight to, for us to honor you for this award.
Well, thank you.
The award's named in honor of Barbara Mason, who dedicated her life to preserving the environment and establishing the Keep America Beautiful System in Georgia and the nation. Under her leadership, significant improvements were made in Georgia in the area of waste reduction, conservation of resources, property maintenance, quality of life, and beautification, all of which Keep Hall Beautiful is involved in also. This is what they said about Cindy at the luncheon in the award. Cindy, and this is also from Rick Foote, who, and I'm glad Rick's here because he helped to nominate Cindy for the award, I think. Cindy truly deserves this award. She took an organization that was in a state of decline and raised it up, so we have a fully functioning board and a place of impact in the community, said Rick Foote, Hall County Natural Resources Coordinator and President of the Keep Hall Beautiful Board of Directors. We thank you, Rick, for that comment. Nearly 300 Georgians attended the 32nd Annual Awards Luncheon at the Emory Conference Center Hotel. The annual program honored individuals and organizations working to improve Georgia's environment. Keep Hall Beautiful is a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to educating citizens about environmental stewardship. Through volunteer projects, citizens are involved in community cleanups, beautification efforts, special events, recycling, and tree plantings. And if you want to know more about Keep Hall Beautiful, visit their website, which is And Cindy, we're so proud of you, and let's give Cindy a round of applause.
Thank you.
And before you sit down, I don't know, I was thinking, George, you may have a comment. George has been on the Keep Hall Beautiful Board, and also, George, happy birthday. This is Mr. Wayne's birthday today.
Not going to have any more.
That's right.
Anyway, I really appreciate Cindy so much. She has meant a lot to this organization. She has carried it forward in a major way, and Cindy's very visible in this community. She's everywhere. Everywhere I seem to go, she's there. But she has, she has truly taken this organization and led it forward, and the things that she was able to accomplish in the short period of time she's been the director is just simply amazing. And we look forward to the future as well. I see a very bright future ahead because with Cindy's leadership, I'm sure that American bloom is going to blossom as a rose. And I think other projects are going to move ahead, too, the recycling, the tree plantings, and the community cleanups as well. And I can see a major difference in the way the community looks since she's taken over. And, you know, it's just, she continues to amaze me, and I hope her health gets better in the short run, and we get her back in January. We're certainly looking forward to your continuing service to this great organization that I feel very proud to serve in.
Cindy, would you like to say anything?
I just, I have a great team of people. I mean, it definitely didn't happen, you know, just because of me, I have a wonderful Board of Directors, I have wonderful people, and your support means everything. And so, you know, we wouldn't be where we are without it, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy. Congratulations.
And is Jeff Worley here from the Collegiate Grill? Okay, Jeff, there he is. And it's, Jeff and Deborah, right?
No.
Donna, Donna, I'm sorry. And they are the owners of the Collegiate, and they were named the burger, the best burger of the state by USA Today. And so we wanted to recognize the Collegiate Grill and tell you a little bit about the history for the people that are watching TV. I think everybody in the audience probably is very aware of the Collegiate, but if you're new in town, you might not. But thank you for being with us, and I want to talk a little bit about, about the award and the Collegiate. USA Today asked local experts to name one great burger joint in each state in the District of Columbia, and the article contained the following excerpt about the Collegiate. This was from Georgia. It said, "George Brown opened the historic Collegiate Grill in 1947 in downtown Gainesville." I think I'm, I was also born in 1947. Customers enjoy freshly-prepared burgers, dogs, and shakes in 1940s setting. The black-and-white checkered floors, red vinyl booths, and counter seating make the experience even more memorable." And it gives the address and the phone number. It's recommended by Kevin Langston, Deputy Commissioner of Georgia's Tourism Office. So that was really a great award. And the interesting thing, too, about Jeffrey is that he began, he started working at the Collegiate as a young boy when George Brown and his wife ran the Collegiate back in the, in the, I guess you started when you were 12 in the, what was that, in the 60s or?
No, that was a little bit further along than that, mid-'80s. Restaurant business is hard on you.
Well, I was 12 in the 50s. Anyway, so anyway, he started working there and learned their recipes and how they did things, and then he did other things, and meanwhile, the Collegiate changed hands and changed menus, but he was lucky enough, and we're lucky enough, that he acquired the Collegiate in 2008 and has brought back the original quality and the original menus of the Browns. And so we're so excited about you being here and that you won this award. So it says, "A simple menu, fresh ingredients, and service with a smile is what you can expect each and every time you visit the Collegiate Grill." So we're happy you're here, and I know Mr. Hammack has been, has been really wanting us to have you come to the council meeting because we're always so proud of you, and just want to give you a round of applause also.
Thank you very much.
And Jeff, would you like to say anything about?
Well, thank you certainly for the recognition, and we appreciate the support of the folks of Gainesville. Been mighty good to us.
Great.
And we brought some burgers, and we're going to leave them. I guess, maybe, can I leave them over here with your permission?
Sure.
You enjoy. I can't say that in French, but you enjoy.
Merci, merci beaucoup, monsieur.
Thanks, thanks, Jeff.
It's very good food. You know, well, I just wanted to say, it's a great honor, and you can certainly tell I'm a participant in the collegiate frequently. And they do a good job, and it certainly brought recognition to the city. And maybe we can get them on the website, too, and people can plug in. Thank you.
People like Danny that grew up here, grew up eating at the Collegiate, I'm sure.
Sure did. Still go there quite often. My grandson loves to go and sit on the stew and watch him flip the burgers. He just thinks that's the greatest thing in the world.
I heard also that everything's better with grease.
I wanted to say, too, that I never thought I'd enjoy a hamburger for breakfast, but I think when they took over the business, they served us hamburgers for breakfast, and that was on Eye on Gainesville TV program. And they weren't bad at all.
I love it.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. And next, we have several awards for the Park and Recreation Department. We can't tell you how proud we are of the Parks and Recreation Department. I'll ask Melvin Cooper and whoever else he wants to bring forward as we give these awards. There's several.
Merci, my audience.
The people, I know that we have Jody Cooley.
I'd like to ask all of our staff to come up.
Okay.
If they will, because they all are the people who work behind the scenes to be recognized. And our Board Chairman, Jody Cooley, is here as well.
I love it.
As you come forward, the first award that, I mean, the first distinction I want to recognize is that they were re-accredited by the Commission on Accreditation for Parks and Recreation Agencies. That's the CAPRA accreditation, and this is, they've been accredited since 19...
2000.
I mean, 2000, and they were, it was the second agency in Georgia to be accredited. And there are only 95 agencies in the whole country, and I remember a few years ago, there were only 60, and there've begun to be a few more, but we were in the very, very first ones that were accredited in the country, and every five years, they have to go through re-accreditation, and they have to pass something like 144 standards, and they've met every single one of those, which is extremely rare for Park and Rec Department. And Melvin, do you want to say anything about accreditation?
I would like to recognize our accreditation manager for the last 10 years, Brenda Martin. Brenda has been the one that has organized and kept us on track and kept us on task relative to accreditation each year. It's not an easy task. It's about a six-month process, and then accreditation team comes from the National Recreation and Park Association all over the country and spends a week with us to go through our files, to visit our facilities, and to discuss our organization with our community. And Brenda has done an outstanding job in keeping us on task to make sure that we stay, make sure our files are correct.
Hey, Brenda.
Thanks, Brenda. There's a lot of information that we have in our packet... There's a lot of information that we have in our packet about the CAPRA, how distinguished agencies have to be to meet this accreditation. We're very proud of you for doing, for meeting all those standards. Then the second award is that Gainesville won the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Agency of the Year this year in our population category. And this is the 12th time in 20 years that we have received that award. And that's wonderful. I mean, 12 times out of 20 is unheard of. And Melvin, do you want to say anything about that?
It is pretty difficult, and a lot of the times that we didn't get that award in those eight years during that period of time, because we'd gotten it. There was a time that the criteria said you couldn't get it back-to-back consecutively, but that has changed since then. So, we're proud of that opportunity to represent the City of Gainesville and this team of people that stands with me tonight.
And you've set a bar for other agencies to try to meet, since they know that you're probably going to win it because you're the best. So, I know that that's really improved probably Park and Rec Departments all over the state trying to come up to your standards.
It is.
So, we appreciate that. And then, at the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association, the last, the award ceremony, your agency won four different program awards.
We did. The Program Section for July's Parks and Recreation Month, GRPA Minority Section Innovation Program Award for the agency's Make a Splash Learn to Swim Program that we work in partnership with the Gainesville City Schools in teaching all sixth graders in the city school system how to swim. And under Julie Butler's direction, the GRPA Multi-Event Publication Award for Agencies Fall Gainesville at Play Bar this year. And those were the program awards that we've done. But what I'm most proud of is a number of the staff that was recognized as well. Judy Williams, Judy, step up this way. Judy was recognized as the GRPA Distinguished Administrative Support Staff. And Megan Hill, Megan? Megan, if you've been out to the Aquatics Center, Megan is our aquatics manager there, and she was recognized as the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Aquatics Section Distinguished Professional. And Michael Graham, my Deputy Director, Michael? Michael is here. Michael was recognized by the Association Administrator Section Distinguished Professional Award. And Missy Bailey, who's not with us tonight, was recognized with the Roy Hammond Leadership Award. And I'm extremely proud of them. But it takes, as the old saying goes, it takes a village. And we've got a wonderful village here under the direction of Jody Cooley and our board that supports us and the support we get from Gainesville City Council. We are working to continue the tradition of excellence that has been set before us, and we thank you for that support.
Okay, let's give a round of applause for the whole department. And Melvin, if you'll stay forward, the rest of y'all can sit down if you want to. We want Melvin to stay forward. And again, we're so proud of the whole department. But Melvin has won an outstanding honor this year, and I'm going to let Danny talk about that, because Danny represents the city on the Park and Rec Board as ex officio member, and he wants to talk about Melvin's honor.
Our own Melvin Cooper was inducted to the Georgia Recreational and Parks Association Hall of Fame. He was the 35th recipient of this, and it's a very distinguished award. And I want to read some of the comments that was said about him during the awards banquet at Chequel Island. "For anyone who knows Melvin Cooper or has had the privilege of working with him, certain things are obvious. He is committed to his family, his church, his community, and his Georgia Bulldogs. He is passionate about his work and a champion for causes in which he believes. For 38 years, he has been a true advocate of parks and recreation, at times a quiet force behind the scenes, and at times a proud voice heard center stage. He is a respected leader on the local, state, and national levels, and his professional accomplishments as plentiful and varied at this industry. He is a visionary whose commitment to excellence, customer service can be seen in everything he does, both professionally and personally. Melvin is one of the most professional professionals that I have ever had the pleasure of working with. Everything that he does exemplifies the true workings of a recreational professional." This was from Wayne Gay, the Director of Carrollton Parks and Recations. "Melvin has fought time and time again in Washington to keep recreation issues forefront of local, state, and national agendas. He has worked hard to secure support for vital land and water conservation funds. He has shaped policy, led the change of many issues imported to the future of parks and recs. Melvin has served on dozens of committees and held many positions on the GRPA Board of Trustees, including President in 1993. His contributions were recognized in 1999 when he received the Distinguished Professional Award, the highest award given to a recreational professional in the state of Georgia. The list of honors and recognitions that Melvin has received in his professional life and in his service to his community are simply too many to mention. Melvin's success is due to part of his willingness to evolve with the changing face of parks and recreation and is committed to staying on the cutting edge of trends that affect this industry." "I have had the pleasure and good fortune to know Melvin Cooper since he was a teenager, participating in the GRPA-sponsored youth workshop. Melvin was a leader, and just as he is today in his adult life. His service and desire has always been to provide the citizens of Gainesville with the very best of park and recreation services and to stay on the cutting edge of new developments and techniques in this field," is Tom Martin, retired GRPA Executive Director. "Melvin is a visionary and takes pride in what he does. Throughout our years of serving as GRPA, Melvin has continued to uphold the professionalism and camaraderie of the association. He does not mind rolling up his sleeves. He is a big proponent of marketing ourselves as professionals and as a professional," Craig Sewell, Director of Tiff County Parks and Recs. "Melvin is committed to excellence and expects the same from those around him. Under his leadership, Gainesville Parks and Recs achieved national accreditation twice, and the agency and its staff are recognized year after year for its professionalism in programs. His mantra to staff is a famous quote from Vince Lombardi, 'We are going to relentlessly chase perfection, knowing full well that we will not catch it, because perfection is unobtainable. But we are going to relentlessly chase it, because in the process, we will catch excellence.' I am not remotely interested in being good." "He is committed to building bridges, forming successful partnerships. He has crossed countless barriers to forge allegiance, alliances with benefit to his community and those who live in it. Melvin Cooper's door is always open. For the rare occasion when it is closed, you are greeted with words of wisdom, hung with care, that encourage you to be a better professional and a better person. From Tommy Lasorda and the things we can learn from dogs, adding memo to a parent from a child, Melvin has a talent to making you stop and think. For me, there is one quote on Melvin Cooper's door that best describes him. 'Do not follow where the path may lead; go instead where there is no path and leave a trail,'" Ralph Waldo Emerson. Melvin, we are very proud of you, and your agency, and your staff, and we want to thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Do we have any citizens' issues? Any citizens that would like to speak to the council tonight? I think the Park and Rec staff is leaving, but thank you again for being here, and we wanted you to be here.
Thanks to each one of you.
Also, when we recognize Melvin. They're going to work, that's right. Jody, thank you for being here. If there are no citizens' issues, we'll go to the consent agenda. We have minutes from the September 7th council meeting and the September 21st council meeting. Are the minutes in order?
They're in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second, and all in favor? It's unanimous. And we have three resolutions. Does anybody want to remove any of the resolutions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And we have two alcoholic beverage license applications.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The first one is a new license for the package set of wine. The name of the business is Beau Alexander's Wine and Gifts, located at 109 South Washington Street, and the application is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous?
Final application is a change of the managing agent for the consumption on premises of beer and wine for Oriental Garden Number Two, located at 891 Dawsonville Highway, Suite 120, and the application is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? And that's unanimous. We have one item on public hearing, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, we will conduct the hearing in this matter as we conduct all hearings. First, I will ask clerk if all the advertisements and proper notifications have been given.
Yes, they have.
Thank you. First, we will hear from a member of the staff of the city. Following that, we will hear from those who are in favor of the proposal. After that, we will hear from those who are opposed to the proposal. I would ask that if you speak, that you come forward to the microphone, give your name and address, and whether you are a resident of the city or the county, or you're residents anyway. We would ask that you limit your remarks to five minutes or less. We give each side 10 minutes, but most always, we give everybody an opportunity to speak. We would ask that if you have any remarks, that you make them to the council and not to anyone in the audience. So, with that explanation, I will call the matter for our hearing, which is a request from Jordan and Jordan Properties Incorporated to annex a 8.27-plus-of-minus acres tract located on the northwest side of Gottes, I may mispronounce that.
Yes.
Drive northeast of Ramsey Road at its terminus, also known as 2880 Gottes Circle, and to establish zoning as Residential One R1. It's in Ward Number Two, and the proposed use is an 18-lot, single-family residential subdivision.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
The applicant is proposing to annex the subject property with zoning of R1 in order to develop an 18-lot, single-family subdivision at a density of 2.17 dwelling units per acre. The subject property is currently zoned VC and AR3 within Hall County. It is contiguous to the city limits of Gainesville along its southeasterly property boundary line. Subject property is an undeveloped wooded parcel and is adjacent to Lake Lanier. The applicant states the proposed subdivision will have minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet and minimum home sizes of 1,800 square feet of heated floor space, as well, the development is to include an eight-slip community boat dock that presently exists. Access to the subdivision is proposed from the Ramsey Road cul-de-sac. Garbage pickup and road maintenance are to be provided by the City of Gainesville. Public water and sewer are to be utilized. The Public Utilities Department states there is sufficient water and sewer to serve the subdivision. The future land use map of the comprehensive plan places the subject property within the residential land use category, which is characterized by single-family residential development at moderate densities ranging from .5 acres to 1.5 acres in size. The Planning and Appeals Board voted to approve the request with the following five conditions. Number one, the subject property shall be limited to a maximum of 16 single-family lots. Number two, the proposed development shall meet or exceed the infill residential development standards as required by the Unified Land Development Code, and each home shall be a minimum of 1,800 square feet of heated floor space. Number three, the proposed separate boat storage shall be permitted within the easement area of the subject property, pending approval by Georgia Power, and must be screened by landscaping to the satisfaction of Community Development Department staff. Number four, the owner-developers shall disclose the existence of industrial activities on adjacent and nearby properties as part of the purchase-sale agreement with potential buyers. Said disclosure shall state, quote, "Owners, occupants, and users of property shown are hereby informed of the impacts associated with industrial practices which may take place on adjacent and nearby property, including but not limited to noise, odors, dust, traffic, and the operation of machinery. Therefore, owners, occupants, and users of the property should be prepared to expect the effects of such practices." And number five, all conditions of zoning shall be made a part of any final plat created for the subdivision.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone like to speak in favor of the proposal?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Frank Norton, 434 Green Street, Gainesville, Georgia. I represent Jordan and Jordan Properties. Why a subdivision in this day and time? It's about micro-markets. Today, on Lake Lanier, on both sides of Lake Lanier, there is under a five-month supply of existing homes under $500,000 in value. That market is super strong. Conversely, when you look at houses on Lake Lanier over $1 million, there's a 12-year supply. It's about micro-markets. This project, as it is designed, is to meet that micro-market. People are searching for quality vacation homes in our community. The assets that you are promoting in your tourism effort, in the community activities that we have, is an attractor for people. It's an attractor for people to live here, and it's an attractor for people to visit on weekends. That is some of the best tax base we can ever have and hope to have as a community. They don't use our library. They rarely pull from our emergency services, and yet they leave their taxes here. This proposed development of quality homes was carefully planned by noted architect Jack Bailey. It fits well within the City of Gainesville's plan for a recreational lifestyle community. The owners purchased this property for residential use in the mid-1970s, well before the industrial park and the business character. They have been patiently, they have been patient for the market to develop and have thoughtfully considered the surrounding area and the needs of prospective buyers and the stewardship of the land and their planning. The owners have been supportive and cooperative with Kubota on their recent road realignment, which cleans up the access to this piece of property. Our original proposal was for 18 lots, which we at the time deemed financially viable to build the road, the road structure, the sewers, amenities, and sustain the development through association fees. But we have agreed to the Planning Commission's recommendation to reduce that number to 16, and the recommendation to include our separate boat storage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Go ahead. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the proposal? There being none, I will close the hearing on the matter and turn it over to the council for a decision.
Mayor, I'd like to move to hold first reading on an order that's to annex the property located at 2880 Gottes Circle.
Okay, it's moved in second. Is any discussion? All in favor? That's five in favor. And
we have another zoning.
I make a motion to hold first reading on an order that establishes zoning as Residential One with conditions set forth by the planning board.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor? Thank you. And Frank, we're excited about this project, and thank you for being here tonight, and we look forward to having it come to fruition. Thank you.
Excited about all of your efforts, Frank. Thank you.
That concludes our public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Now, we have council issues. I'll start with the birthday boy, Mr. Wangman.
I have two things. First of all, I ran into a lady from Florence Drive, and she said that the center line, the yellow center line on Florence Drive is gone. And it's especially important since the traffic has increased there. I think now they have access to Free Chapel from that road. That's what she was telling me. I went out there and looked at it, and sure enough. So, there needs to be a center line. Another thing is there's a pothole, at least the beginnings of a pothole, on Riverside Drive and, what is it, Morningside Cleveland Highway?
Morningside.
Morningside.
You turned again.
That's correct. There's a, and I think if we nip that in the bud, that's going to help. Otherwise, the hole's just going to get bigger and bigger. So, and I did get out 25 invitations to our meeting, and don't know if anybody's attended from those 25. Is anyone here because of it? Nope, I guess not. So, but we'll continue with our efforts there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donegan.
Two things, Madam Mayor, Council. While we're passing out recognitions, it was in the paper today, but I-
While we're passing out recognitions, it was in the paper today, but I'll just go ahead. And our golf course was recognized by the Northeast Georgia Senior Men's Association as the best golf course in North Georgia.
Exactly.
And that's quite an accomplishment this day and time, and I'm very proud of Roger and his staff for what they do. And it is a nice golf course. And another thing, this morning I was listening to the radio and heard a little issue on there that I want to correct. I want to take this time to clarify a statement by Commissioner Billy Powell this morning on WDUN. Commissioner Powell stated that the cities were collecting franchise fees on county residents, and all cities should reimburse the county. Well, this is simply not true. First, the utility companies, not the cities, collect franchise fee and only gives the cities those fees it collects within the city limits. It is unfortunate that more thorough search is not done prior to making statements that prove inaccurate, but we need to clarify those statements.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I too would like to commend the golf course, and if everybody would read that article in the paper, it's really good, and it was a real honor that they were chosen number one. We have the Eggs and Issues Breakfast on Thursday at 7:30 at the Civic Center with the legislators and later-
We'll have a table there.
We'll have a table, so you can just look for our table, we don't have to find a place. And I'll go now to Mrs. Pecaris.
Howdy. Okay, I'm a braggard, and I'll just continue to brag, because Gainesville is such a beautiful city, and there are so many good things that are here that makes me just keep going. This season of the year gives me just the best pleasure in the world, because it is the sounds of the season. We've got concerts everywhere in all areas. It's just really, really good to see how the people in Gainesville respond to the beauty of the season. And I'd just like to thank every citizen who participates in everything that we do, be it churches, or be it civic venues, or be it whatever. Mayor Protem was super. He spoke for the council the other night at the lighting of the Rotary Tree, and I'd just like to thank everybody who participated in the beautiful parade of old cars that we had coming down Green Street, and for everybody who participated in the, I still call it the Victorian Christmas. It's really good to see how our community comes together, and this makes me very proud. Okay, so I just need to keep on saying that as much as I can, it's just really good.
I believe that's the most beautiful I've ever seen, that Christmas tree.
New lights, four thousand new lights.
I heard that y'all got lots of new lights, and so the Rotary Club needs to be commended.
Yes.
A whole bunch for installing a whole lot more new lights, okay? It was really, really beautiful. When you touched the button, super. I was freezing, it was cold.
It was cold.
Okay? But we actually did it. Thanks to everybody in the city who constantly makes us all look good. The website, I said I spent about an hour today, but you can spend a lot more time, they've done a lot of work to make this website what it ought to be. So it is really, really good. Let's see, there was something else. The other day, when we had the meeting with the stakeholders, speaking of the commercial people, that was such a good meeting, and it gives all of us hope that in our city we can produce, and we can do, and we can share, and business really is thriving, and I just thank everybody for doing that. I see in the back, I've got Levy Smith. Did you bring Boy Scouts with you tonight? Would you please stand up where you are? And would you talk to us about who you brought?
Please come to the microphone.
Come to the microphone, please. Good, good, good. What these young people did, Keep Our Beautiful got a recognition tonight. They came, and it was about 12 Boy Scouts from Troop 15 and about 12 from 219. Those two Boy Scout troops came and helped to clean up the neighborhood, and I just need you to know how much I appreciate you for making sure you brought. And I see you got Mr. Woodard here with you. Go for it, he's growing up. Talk to me.
Okay, I'm the scout master of Boy Scout Troop 15.
Lee.
And Boy Scout Troop 15 is sponsored by St. John Baptist Church.
Yes.
Of course, the beautiful church down here on E. Butler. You see when you come into our fair city. And we're very proud of this sponsorship.
Yeah.
You know, back in the 80s, I think, there was a group out of Atlanta called Mother's Finest.
Yeah.
Well, I'm here to present one of Gainesville's finest-
Okay.
His name is Markell Woodard. He's a freshman at Gamer High School, and he's working on this eagle project.
I love it.
And I'm gonna let Markell tell you about what he plans to do for his eagle project.
Très bien, monsieur.
Okay, like Mr. Levy said, I'm Markell Woodard, and I'm from Gainesville, Georgia. And what I'm planning to do is, I'm planning to build a two-way sign, so you can see it from the north and the south, at my church, Mount Calvary Church of God Holiness. Because it's a little torn and battered, so I just decided I was just gonna build another sign for the church.
Good. Très bien.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate it very much.
Yes.
And good luck on getting your eagle, kind of that's a long road and a lot of work.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Bruno's husband is a scout master, so she knows what you're doing.
Oh, yeah. Scout master extraordinaire, I know that well.
And two Eagle Scouts sons, so thank you.
You know, he doesn't talk about this much, but you know, Robert Bruno has produced 100 Eagle Scouts.
I love it.
100. We actually have another candidate, but he's, you know, he's very busy, most of these guys are very busy, they're straight A students. And his name is Cameron Drake. And he's away on a basketball trip, so-
And I think he's doing a playground for his-
That's right.
Yeah, and I saw him at the mule camp market, and he was looking at the playground that Gainesville High built for the Habitat Homes, you know, and it was beautiful, and he said he was gonna do one very similar to the one Gainesville High had, and that's gonna be really nice for his church, for a church playground.
That's right.
I love it.
I hope you'll invite us to your Eagle Court of Honor when that happens.
I sure will, I'll make sure I do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Merci, merci, merci.
Madam Mayor, I was just gonna commend Levy. Levy has been with the Scouts how many years now, Levy?
Next year, it'll be 25.
25 years as a role model in that community for Boy Scouts. Levy has one daughter, has no sons, but certainly has taken scouting under his wings. How many Scouts have passed through Troop 15?
That's a good question.
But approximately.
I would say probably about 300.
Yeah.
That's great. What a tremendous effect they've had in our community.
Exactly.
Thank you, Levy.
Thank you very much.
Have you ever seen that movie, Follow Me, Boys? That's who he reminds me of.
Merci, maman. Okay, all of the, Levy's daughter and Markell's mother are students of mine, and we can't help it. I appreciate y'all so much for being here.
We've been all for this.
I love it. Lee? Bon. And by the way, Levy speaks French quite well.
Oh, no question.
I love it. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, madam.
Mr. Hammerick?
I pass. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. I think, there's something else on the calendar I was gonna remind you, oh, the Mayor's Motorcade, that's what it is. Mayor's Motorcade, we've been collecting items for the last few weeks for the residents of Georgia's mental hospitals, particularly the one from Gainesville, they'll be going to Rome to the mental hospital there in Rome. And so Thursday at 10 o'clock, we'll be having the send-off for the Mayor's Motorcade gifts at the Senior Center. So we'll all be participating in that, and if you have not had a chance to give any items, you can bring those items, anything from toiletry items, to bedroom slippers, to board games, to books, to anything you can think of that people in a hospital might enjoy to the community service center before Thursday afternoon, when the truck will take off. So just encourage people, we've already been on the radio and had a letter to the editor, and it has some publicity, but it's still not too late to bring items if you want to. And that'll be Thursday at 10 o'clock that we'll have our program.
And Mayor, one other thing, Myrtle talked about the business in Gainesville and Hall County and how well we're doing, and Frank Norton showed me an article just a second ago, I've not had a chance to read it, but I will, Atlanta Business Chronicle, about Gainesville and Hall County being a hotspot for industrial growth, and-
I love it.
So it's a big plus, so I'm looking forward to reading it.
Frank said he would get a copy to Kip, and then I'm sure we'll all get a copy of that, and that's very exciting.
Excuse me, just one more thing. I know that you all didn't raise your hand when Mr. Wangman said, did anybody come from the invitations? For everybody else attending council meeting, thank you so much for being here, okay?
Do we have any city attorney issues?
No, ma'am.
Okay, city manager issues?
No, ma'am.
None? Okay. How about Denise City Clerk issues?
No, ma'am.
And we don't need an executive session then?
No, ma'am.
So we will, do we have anything else to come before the-
City manager issues?
Oh, yeah. Excuse me.
I also take it back, I forgot, but I have the accreditation pens that I wanted to give.
Oh, great, thank you.
Wow.
Thank you. And we're all invited to your luncheon on the 15th next week, too. We're looking forward to that.
I hope you'll be here.
Thank you, monsieur.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Melvin.
I feel important with this.
That's a beautiful pen, thank you very much. Do we have anything else to come before the council? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Amen.
Will be adjourned, thank you very much.